Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of September 28, 2015. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Legions followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows: The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and after all the public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, our first item would be our public hearing consent agenda, items one through four.
Is there anyone wishing to testify on any of these items? Okay, clerk, please call the next item.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Gaylord Baird.
So moved.
Second.
I will move. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Christensen, second by Eskridge.
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried. Five to zero. Next would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. We would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items five and six together. They're the application of Midwest Plains Food and Lodging, Inc., doing business as Fat Dogs, for a Class D liquor license at 3100 Northwest 12th Street, and the related manager application of Jeffrey Moore.
Just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Name is Jeffrey D. Moore. Address is 3610 Sunset Drive, North Platte, Nebraska, 69101.
Welcome. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your application?
We are applying to, for a Class D liquor license at our location here at 3100 Northwest 12th Street for our convenience store, DBA Fat Dogs, to sell alcohol and beer, just in a convenience store setting.
Any questions? Go ahead, Sidney.
Mr. Moore, I saw on your application that you, as of the application date, which was in August, you hadn't yet had your training. Did you get to that on September 10?
We, I did, and pass of flying colors, yes.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Carl?
Yes, Mr. Moore, from North Platte. Have you done business in Lincoln?
We've been doing business here for about two years.
Okay, all right, great.
All right. Do you want to tell us any more about your business, or?
It's a standard convenience store operation.
I'm just curious, the name.
That's a, kind of a, our owner's nickname throughout his lifespan, I guess you might say.
Okay. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Almost want to ask, what breed?
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this item?
Hello, I am, I'm Mark Wilkinson.
Mr. Reddick? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Mark Wilkinson, 405 Sandpiper Way, North Platte, Nebraska. I am the Fat Dog. This is one of, this is, we've got about seven convenience stores across the state in Lincoln, Grand Island, Lexington, North Platte, Ogallala, and Sydney. We also have, are in the hotel business in North Platte with the Holiday Inn Express, the Best Western and the Howard Johnson Hotel. We've got a Comfort Inn and a Holiday Inn Express in Lexington, where we also have liquor licenses. The, we're also in the food business with Taco Bell and KFC in outstate Nebraska. So this is, we're not new to the, to the liquor business. We've, we've been in this for quite a while, so.
Thank you.
Got good PR out of that.
We see some fat cats in here. We don't often see a fat dog, so thanks for joining us.
Oh, golly.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this item? All right, clerk, please call the next item.
Next would be item seven, manager application of Lauren Duncan for the Hyatt Place Lincoln Hay Market at 600 Q Street.
Anyone here to testify?
She did confirm she would be here.
Okay, well, not seeing her, should we just move on to the next item?
Yeah. All right, next would be application of Rhino Dynamics, doing business as Duffy's, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 60 feet by 55 feet at 1412 O Street on October 10th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Hello, I'm Scott Hatfield from Duffy's, 1412 O Street. Yeah, and I'm here for the SDL. We're going to have an outdoor show on October 10th with a band called The Killigans. I hope you're familiar with them. They're a local but famous Irish punk band, Irish rock band, and it'll be great. It's going to be an outdoor show. I expect to see all the council members there as usual, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Good girl.
So I see it goes till 2:00 a.m.
Yes. You know, we like to list that because the, it's when the bar inside closes, and this is attached, and so we like to keep it the same to not confuse our staff and customers. But I don't think the music will be playing until 2:00 a.m. I know you live nearby, and I'll come check on you at 1:00. I'll come check on you at 1:00 and make sure that you're sleeping soundly. I don't expect the music to go until 2:00, though.
All right, thank you.
Potentially close to 2:00.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, Theresa, can you?
Madam Chair, if I could make a motion here, I would move for approval of items five, six, and eight.
Second.
All right, moved by Camp, seconded by Christensen.
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Madam Chair, I'd move for continuance on item seven until next week's meeting.
Second.
Moved by Camp, seconded by Christensen. Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next, then, would be our public hearing resolutions. Item nine is approving, I'm sorry, I'll call items nine and 10 together. They're approving the Victory Park VA Campus Redevelopment Agreement and amending the fiscal year 1516 CIP to authorize and appropriate $7,134,000 in TIF funds for the Victory Park VA Campus Project.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, the Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. About four years ago, the Seniors Foundation became the winner of an RFP from the Veterans Administration who wanted, as part of a national strategy, to part with the use of Veterans Administration assets that were outdated and old, and they wanted to narrow their portfolio of assets. They did this by seeking out people who would develop that property over the space of a 75-year lease. The search then came to find partners and folks who would participate in that project, and that took a rather long time. However, that team was eventually assembled. And then, it took off, and it was on June 22nd that this council found that the area involved was in fact blighted and substandard, meeting the state statute. The 17 of the 20 buildings on the location had incredible and substantial problems with them, and the state statute was met. And with that, we drafted a redevelopment plan that was passed by this council on August 10th. There was a pre-council the same day, you might remember the notes from that, in which we described the process as well, and then there was a PUD on August 31st. So it's not as if we haven't been there, but today, we bring you the 95 pages of this redevelopment agreement. On our last meeting date, we took a picture of Brad Carell as he was leaving the session. You might remember that Brad was six foot two when he began, but that's how it all came out, and tonight, at the 11th hour, given the timeline and schedule that is here and imposed by the Veterans Administration, we ask for the adoption of the agreement for Victory Park. There's two ways of looking at what you're looking at. One of them is the entire project, which could, given the timelines extended by the Veterans Administration, run for 10 years of the gradual doing of the phases that are involved. If one were to do all the phases, we estimate the project at $115 million. We estimate the private development costs borne by the developer at $108 million, and that the total TIF for that entire period would be $7.1 million. If you looked at what we expect to happen in the offing, with a groundbreaking scheduled for the VASH Housing October 1st, and the Phase 1 that immediately follows, we would be looking at a Phase 1 of $20 million. We would be looking at a total TIF of $1.3 million. We'd be looking at private development expenditures of $19.5 million. That would be in furtherance of portions of the entire project. This is a site plan for the entire project. It involves phases which are listed by A, B, C, D, and E, but then that's because they are not chronological. The phases will be executed as the market and as conditions arise that are appropriate. For example, Phase 1, which is the VASH Housing, the redoing of some office space in the, what is now clinic, and formerly the hospital, and the first of the medical buildings would be the immediate project. Hopefully, if the clinic that is scheduled for Lincoln by the VA is cited at this location, Phase 2 would be this 100,000 square foot building up here. If it's not so look at as a clinic, then it may be that other pieces would go in its place. They include the rehabilitation of Doctor's Row. They include a number of, another building of housing, which would be 70 units, and it would be a three-story building. It could be one, two, or three of these 42-unit houses, apartments, rather, that are two stories. There are three of those. Or it could be these fourplexes totaling 28 units down in this area. Did I do that? I think I did. I hit the wrong button. This is also another phase, which is the second medical facility. The well-known and historically significant parade ground area is left intact, but the rest of the area is used to create a body of development and valuation growth sufficient to offset and support all of the work that's necessary to be done. And when I say there's a lot of work to be done, it includes a rather good deal of infrastructure, which is one of the first things that will need to be done. Let me see if I can give you a clean copy there. This is the initial phasing of public infrastructure. These constitute refurbished or new roads. What is not visible is storm water or storm sewer. It's also hard to see a public water main that runs all the way around here and out and here. Also, a new sanitary sewer. By the way, the infrastructure here, which is now privately owned, is 80 years old and completely substandard by today's standards. This will be done privately, but then, as it's completed, turned over to the city, so it will be public utilities eventually. The needs of veterans take primacy. VASH Housing is for only veterans, and these are veterans that have an income standard. They're, they're hard up, generally speaking. Some are homeless, some are close to being homeless. All the rest is veterans' preferences and seniors as well. But in the case of veterans, they don't have to be seniors. They need to be veterans to get that preference. The neighborhood has been consulted, originally found a good deal of difficulty with the project. Changes in consultation with the neighborhood, however, I think has assuaged some, but perhaps not all of those concerns. There's also been continuing reaction with the Veterans Administration, and they have been, I think, hard to nail down from the perspective of the developer, but this is the project that we are prepared to do. The money that we'll spend out of the TIF money is essentially for infrastructure. It'll also be for site acquisition, and that really means buying down the lease that the developer will have to pay the Veterans Administration, and that lease runs for 75 years. So there'll also be rehabilitation, energy enhancements, public amenities, and streetscape in those costs as well. This is 60 acres that time has left behind, even though it looks pristine and beautiful as you drive by, because it is a lovely landscape that's well-maintained. That won't necessarily be true in the future unless there is somebody to take over this project. It represents a significant difficulty because the VA is not going to sell the land to a private developer who could then use it. It has this unique 75-year limitation to it, and it's only been available because of an RFP process, and this is the winner of that RFP process, who's stepping forward and taking blighted and substandard property and replacing it with $115 million potentially of development for the community. Are there questions I could answer for you? By the way, the developers here, as is the Seniors Foundation and other parties to the occasion.
Any questions for Dave?
Yeah, the project, will it be ready to break ground October 1st?
Yes. When I say that, I say that because the developer tells me they'll be ready to do it October I'd be happy to show up with a hard hat and a shovel myself, but I don't know if I have the rights to go on the property.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to come and speak in favor of this item? Welcome.
Hello, speaking on the other side this time, from the Wedgwood Neighborhood Association. I'm Philip Baer, Phil Baer, B-O-E-H-R, and have been involved in the process a lot this summer while I'm off from teaching. So it was excellent to interact with you as a council and also the many others, and we wanted to thank you for your openness and for the things we've learned. We appreciate the Historic Preservation Group, the City Council, the Seniors Foundation, others who have been involved, and how they've been communicative to us as well. So we want to thank each of them for that. We, all of our questions were answered, for increased buffer zone, for drainage, for, like, detention ponds, and I believe that we were generally convinced that this is the best use of the property, and that we want to help seniors, we want to help veterans, and this is okay. We, even though, if it did not happen, we would be okay with that, too, because we do like the views out of our backyard there. We just, we were just hoping that a couple of things will be, this is not a negative thing, but some things that we hope are learned through this process. I personally believe that the blighting process should be addressed at some time. It seems like it could be a place where government could overrun somebody who did not really want it to happen, whereas by interaction and discussion, things worked out okay here. But I think there are so many ways, I think something could be blighted, that in the future, we need to be aware that we don't want that to be government override. The informing process, we were also hoping that there might, I don't know if legislature, Ed Schnabel is the one who addressed this, and he was saying that he thought only when it touched zoning did it really become something that we are more aware of. And I think we would have, I mean, we've read about it for four years, but it would be good to have our input perhaps before that time. I don't know what would make that happen, whether it would be some type of thing where if anybody's going to do something with the land, there's some information going out. And when we first, because we were listened to so quickly, the changes were made so rapidly that, you know, if that could have been taken care of a year earlier, that would have been been a little bit less traumatic for all of us. But even then, the process has been, we're concerned that things be followed through regarding the lighting, resulting, also, the existing trees that they'll be taking care of, all those things I believe are in the 93-page document. Keep the park-like atmosphere, and that, it comes on the tax base, and we do hope that VA will continue, will continue to be a beautiful site. But I, as one, I have written a letter to the organization, Neighborhood Grouping, the people that gave their emails, and they, no one gave any other negative things on it. So I just wanted to express that we're in support of it in light of that fact. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all the work that you and your neighbors did with the applicant.
Yeah, it was, it was a really interesting thing to learn and grow, I, thank you.
I would just say that you're right, Phil, that you and your neighbors at the meetings I attended and the correspondence we had was very constructive, and I think that helped facilitate the process.
Yeah, and it looks like it might be here, huh?
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak in favor of this item?
Good evening. My name's Kent Secress, representing the Seniors Foundation, VA Vision LLC, as well as the developer Victory Park LLC, tonight. We have team members here in the audience with me to be able to answer any questions you might have. Linda Toomey, who's from the Department of Veterans Affairs, she's kind of the veterans' housing expert guru for the state and has been super helpful on this project. Greg Geese with Sampson Construction Co., Inc. has also been there for over four years helping seniors move this project forward. The Victory Park LLC and First America First team of Greg Achula is, I think, with us by now, as well as the Senior Foundation team of Mary Ann Stallings, the president, Tammy Ward, the executive director, and Brad Crowe, who's been our team quarterback and coordinator on this project. My presentation's going to be very brief. Dave did a great job summarizing the history and the key elements of the redevelopment agreement, and I want to just start, first of all, by thanking you, the City Council, for sitting through four different public hearings, a pre-council hearing, many phone calls, many emails, many letters. I know you all got contacted, and you got to bear with us, there'll be, on October 12th, one more public hearing for the bond ordinance, but that should be it for a while, hopefully. And we just want to thank you for listening carefully to the neighbors and the veterans and our own interests to make this project go forward. We want to honor your time, and so, again, I'm here just to answer any legal questions you might have. Team members behind me are here to answer any other questions. And to, to address your question, we do have an important deadline of October 1st to start construction. That's not a VA deadline, that's a HUD deadline, for the record, and we are racing to do that so we can preserve and protect 47 section 8 certificates, which will allow the affordability to go forward for the veterans that will live here. Seniors Foundation and the Department of Veterans Affairs has not yet signed, and it's a 71, not 75-year, enhanced use lease, so we've not signed that yet. VA introduced a contingency last week, which then led the developer to introduce a contingency, and they're both working real well together to work out their final differences on those matters. So we anticipate that the resolution, or that of those differences, could take and go beyond October 1st. However, VA has given us a letter of access, so we have the right to start, and we will be starting before October 1st deadline to break ground. So we have that right under our original 2011 extended enhanced use lease, as well as this letter of access. So in turn, this will allow the developer to access the VA campus and the VASH Housing site in particular, to begin construction activities required by the HUD requirements to hold the VASH housing vouchers good, and will keep them enhanced and protected until the enhanced use lease First Amendment does finally get signed. So we are optimistic of breaking ground. Approval of the redevelopment agreement tonight is one of those key steps, and as you have been briefed, we've had many key steps. We've made through all of them so far, and we're determined to get through the final. I also just want to thank Wynn Jermstad, David Landis, Tim C. from the Law Department, Ed Zimmer, and Bob Simmering. They sat through countless meetings with us working on this redevelopment agreement, and we're just real proud of the great vision of seniors and veterans community coming together in Lincoln. It's been a big public-private partnership involving several different governmental entities, one nonprofit entity, and two for-profits, so 10 different players had to come together and coordinate. And that's not counting the Historic Preservation Commission that gave us support, the Planning Commission has given us their support, and hopefully, now you heard, the neighbors have done a good job of giving us their support. So I also want to finally thank VA and HUD. Without their cooperation and patience, we would not be standing in front of you, so that's been a very important part of the puzzle. And finally, we just ask for your support of this very important project, and we'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
I don't see any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Members of the council, I'm Dale Williamson, Brigadier General, retired, United States Army. And us retirees in the Army, we have a slogan, and it's, it's, it's simple. It said, it says, "Retired but still serving." I looked around and couldn't find a better project to be serving on than the one that's before us tonight. Your action today will certainly demonstrate the outstanding commitment the leaders of Nebraska's capital city have for citizens' well-being. The facts are really at our fingertips for the need and the use for land surrounding the Lincoln Historical VA Facility. I was so pleased that the team, and I don't know if I heard the word tonight, the Seniors Foundation are calling the area Victory Park. That's a great term. As the refurbishing of the existing buildings begins to take place and the new buildings begin to rise, it will be a victory for many. And I'd like to focus on, on two groups. First, I want to focus on the veterans group. We are all aware of the fact that after many years of war, an increasing number of US troops have left the military with damaged bodies and minds. While we think of the newest military veterans, the support for declining numbers of World War II veterans- War II veterans, as well as Korean veterans, will never be overlooked. The Vietnam veterans also have many special needs, and they clearly have expressed those needs. Victory Park will fulfill many of those needs. And Lincoln should never be a city with homeless veterans. Fortunately, the problem is being addressed in many cities throughout the nation, and it is so important to take care of veterans in their home state, in their home community, it's much, much better to do that, and Victory Park assures that availability. Second, to senior citizens, that's another very important part. Between now and 2050, the United States will experience considerable growth in its older population. By 2050, the population age 65 and over is projected to be 83.7 million, almost double the estimated number now of 43 million. The baby boomers are largely responsible for this increase in the older population as they began turning 65 in 2011. I couldn't hardly believe that. By 2050, the surviving baby boomers will be over the age of 85, and that doesn't sound too bad to me. Nebraska is right on track with this trend. We're right on track, probably a little ahead of the trend. We have, as you well know, many elderly people in Nebraska. The Seniors Foundation in Lincoln and Lancaster County has accomplished wonderful things while fully recognizing increasing demands as we go through the years. The Victory Park plan with a complex for low-income and homeless veterans, senior apartments, medical offices, and a new senior center really exemplifies the excellent planning that's gone on in the last several years. And last, the illusion of many of my fellow veterans' hold that the Lincoln VA campus can stay in perpetuity as it is must be addressed. The Department of Veterans Affairs, as we heard earlier, must realign the use of many unused facilities throughout the United States, and certainly, Lincoln is no exception. The cost to maintain several hundred vacant buildings with surrounding lands is just staggering, and those funds need to be transferred and used to the ever-increasing costs of veterans' healthcare and community living centers. The development of Victory Park will be an exceptional victory. The redevelopment plan is also an exceptional plan. With a sound Lincoln City Council leadership, once again, we'll be ahead of the national trend, and I really mean that, to deal with emerging issues of citizen well-being. Thank you very much. Strongly support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? All right, would anyone else like to speak in favor of this item?
Linda Stephen, 7330 South Wedgewood Drive, and I'm also one of the Wedgewood neighbors, and I'm here to say that we are in support of the plan, and as Phil said. And again, thank you to the developers for listening to the neighbor concerns, implementing our recommendations, especially moving the four-story building to the blighted area, increasing the buffer zone, and many other changes that they did at our request. So we do hope that the VA clinic will be on site, and we hope that this process will help that to happen. And also, the TIF funding is supposed to help with protecting the existing trees and the park-like atmosphere of the VA land there, so I hope that that will happen for the neighborhood, for the city, for the green space, for veterans and seniors who are using that space. It seems like a very healing kind of atmosphere there. So if there is development, we do think that this is the best possible use of that land, the medical offices, the senior and VA offices, and the green space. So again, we support the redevelopment plan as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stephen. Anyone else? All right, any opposed who'd like to testify?
Richard Escavell, 733 West Cummings Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm not strictly opposed to it because we know without it, it would be a vacant, dilapidated, rundown building. But there are some things that have been stated that, to me, are not quite true. One thing that was just said is there's no lease yet. How can you start a project without a lease? And the developer has not signed an agreement with the leasie to start the project because of what the VA did. So I'd like to, you know, the plan, really, veterans haven't been included in it. I'm not a Brigadier General, I was just a drafty that ate a lot of dirt and blew up a lot of trees and stuff in Vietnam, so I look at it in a different way than an officer. But that site is used by many veterans. But let's get back to the TIF money. Now, Dave Landis touched on it, about using TIF to buy down the lease. Now, the Sunday paper or last week's paper called a grant to the Department of Aging. Well, if it's TIF money and a grant, is it repayable? Because grants are not repayable. Veterans trust is not that good with this whole site. They got the parade ground. Well, what rights do really, are the veterans really going to have to that? What rights are the veterans going to have to the hospital because it's going to be They say there's veterans' preference, the housing and apartments. If that's the case, before the elderly non-veterans, could we please get it in the contract? That veterans have preference over non-veteran elderly people. Dave said that you don't have to be elderly to qualify for that, for a veteran, which is great, but why not put it in there then? Unless it's already been put in, but previous leases, they said it was not in there. They just said, "Trust us." Well, believe me, Vietnam veterans don't trust the government too well. We have never been totally accepted by the whole world, and I just think that would help the veterans buy into this project a little bit more by saying veterans have preference over non-veterans. Just a little statement like that. But I wish them well with the project if it goes forward. Doctor's Row is beautiful, the hospital is beautiful. I just pray that we can get the outpatient clinic there. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed who would like to speak? Okay. Please come forward. Could you please state your name for those who aren't as familiar with you? Could you please state your name for all of us?
Yeah, John L. Austin.
Thank you.
Korean veteran. It's kind of sad that we're taking this historical building down because it was one of the first ones built in the United States for veterans, far as I know. And it's real sad that we have to give this up as veterans. We all should have went together when they first were talking about this thing and raised the deckens about it. Because they shouldn't be able to do anything till they get us the clinic. And I see a nice place on 70th and A Street for the clinic, but that belongs to the gentleman the attorney just talked to. But I knew the guy that built this thing, and he built a good, solid building. It was so good that he went broke on it. His name was Arlo Steak, you know, like the thing you eat? But he did come back, he had a bunch of land on 40th and South and built some houses, so he did all right. Before they do anything, they should build a clinic and make sure it's going to be built, not just hearsay. And that is a good place on 70th and A, but it belongs to Secrest. I don't know, it'd probably take extra Congress to get that away from them. Any questions?
Not at this time, but thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Would anyone else, all right, please come forward?
Mike Morosen, in the neutral position. I work with the homeless veterans almost on a daily basis. In our Legion Post 3, I saw a need and put together a breakfast that we feed on the third Saturday of every month, so y'all are invited. We start feeding about 8 o'clock at Matt Talbot, where I go out. I usually do the cooking, putting it together on a Friday, and I get most of the Legion family to come help serve that. And we do get a lot of homeless veterans down there with a lot of different needs. Coming up this next year, we'll be doing six lunches during the year to help many of these out. So there's a big need out there for that, and I think everybody needs to take a look and the veterans. You know, my brother just finished 30 years in the Air Force, my dad was in World War II, so, you know, there's a great need out there, and I serve on the Honor Guard that does a lot of the funerals for the veterans, and we've done many, many this year, and more coming. So I think the veteran, you know, needs some help, needs some medical attention, you know, as we've seen in the last few years, have been some real problems. So hopefully, this campus here will take care of a lot of the needs that the veterans are looking and haven't gotten in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? When you're done signing in, if you could please state your name and address?
Danny Walker, 2600 Sumner Street. No more south bottoms.
And just for everyone's reference too, you're welcome to sign in after you testify.
This don't take more than five minutes, does it? No. I'll give you a little bit of history of my family. I was a, I've been a patient to VA hospital here in Lincoln since 1970. At that time, for several years, it was a full-service hospital, believe it or not. I had stomach surgery there as a matter of fact. I have a brother and brother-in-law, brother passed away at the Fort Meade, South Dakota, VA hospital. My brother-in-law passed away at the Topeka, Kansas, VA hospital, both Purple Heart recipients. And I want to state for the record one thing. A previous speaker stated that there's medical facilities will be provided at the new plan. That's not true. That's a false statement. That's pure speculation. The way this mess all started, well, we're going to have a meeting with you people. We think we've got a good idea. We need a clinic on one floor only. There's just too many problems with, excuse me, wheelchair patients and et cetera, those handicapped, to get around our building with this, which is three stories. Now, this is the way this mess first started. Then, all of a sudden, well, we got some people coming in, they're interested in redeveloping the area. And keep in mind, I think your plans will show us supposedly speculation that we're going to put in a clinic, and I believe it's the northwest corner of the property. Well, take a look at the plans, that's a three-story clinic, unless they've changed the plans lately. Now, what happened to this hill of beans that the VA told us that we got to have everything on the first floor for veterans to get along better and get around the facility better? This is phony, and this is a very good example why the VA is under considerable investigation all the time. It's constant. It isn't just beginning, and it's not ending either. So keep some of this stuff in mind. These people, people lie through their nose, and as far as this senior group and Sampson Construction, et cetera, and et cetera, and et cetera. You know, I hope they sleep well because they're really doing a disservice to the veterans. There's no two ways about it. I don't care, they can get up here and blow and spill all night long, but it's just a simple fact. And while I'm at it, I want to thank the council members at the first public hearing that voted against it. I really appreciate that, and I wish people would sit back and really consider what they're doing to the veterans. The voters, I hope voters listen to this stuff because I'll tell you what, there's a heck of a lot of veterans that are voters, and they should take the preparation and the cautions to do it because it's wrong what they're doing out there. And if those facilities are so beat up and rundown, why are these people watering at the mouth to get ahold of the property? That don't make sense. Now, it's got to be one way or another. They either tear everything down and build new. What's the deal? They get up here, they were up here blatting about, "Well, that stuff's all run down," and, "Yeah, well, if something's not done, we're going to close the doors and put plywood on everything." I don't know about that. It seems to me like that's a little far-fetched, too. If nothing else, now it's a lie. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Danny, I don't know if any other veterans are going to testify, but the one thing I would do is encourage each of you to stay in touch with Congressman Fortenberry's office and Roger Limkey and Senator Fisher's office, and I'm not sure who Senator Sasse's representative is, but it's very critical to have this clinic relocated, you know, regardless of the issues of whether it's a clinic or a full medical facility, but to really get it done, and this is an ideal location on this campus.
You know, I appreciate that, John, but, and I know what you're saying, and I'm hoping, like, I think there's some past history with Fisher there as far as veterans and et cetera, and et cetera, and et cetera, and I would hoping that we'd hear something from this end, but what have we heard from the American Legion? What have we heard from the VFW? Not one damn thing. About once a week here, I get crap in the mail. Well, you better donate, Danny, here's your new mailing addresses, et cetera, and et cetera, and et cetera. Where are they at in this ordeal? You know what I mean? First deal that came up on this, I mentioned that, hey, there's been developers after this property for over 40 years, and that is a fact. That's an out-and-out fact. Fortenberry's representative says that's a lie. I said, "No, it's not a lie. Who are you here representing?" "Well, Mr. Fortenberry." I said, "Well, before you come in here representing somebody, I don't know what you're talking about." Another individual standing beside me interceding, he says, "No, he's right. It's been that many years, and that how strong they wanted this property." Simple as that, but I understand what you're saying, John, and I will do some writing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. I would like to ask you to delay any vote on this. I think you've had testimony today from veterans who have not been consulted about this, about what they would like to have. You have not done no poll among people who are veterans. You want to use a TIF that is questionable in the way it's used here in Lincoln. Why should a TIF be given to a multimillion-dollar corporation? Why should a TIF be given to a multimillion-dollar corporation who makes no statement, who makes a statement but provides no proof that they would not be able to build this project without it? I think it's appropriate that you do some kind of poll among veterans and ask them what they want to do with it. Have Mr. Fortenberry, Ms. Fisher, Mr. Sasse been involved in this? I don't know that I have any information about that. I did email each one of them and tell them to look in, ask them to look into this, because I think it's a big project. I think they need to know what people think down here in Lincoln, besides just what the VA tells them, if the VA has told them anything about it. What kind of blight is there? Well, Mr. Carell said a couple of weeks earlier that if you look at the buildings, there's blight. Well, I don't see that as a statement of proof. We need some real facts about what is blighted, what could be repaired, and what couldn't be repaired. From the outside, it looks good, as this gentleman stated over here. So, Watch Dogs would like for you to delay this, to be mindful of using a TIF in a better way. I'm not sure even the public knew about this. It was rumored maybe a year or so ago, and then all of a sudden, it's a deal. It's not quite understandable why you even got into it before you had a lease signed, but if that's the way you work, why, I guess that's, you've approved what Mr. Landis wanted to do. So, these are the reasons why we would ask you to delay. I don't really know enough about it to be for or against it. All I know is that I don't think it's been investigated as far as what the bottom line that would really like to happen, have happened to that program. And they have a lot of emotional connection to that for many, many reasons. Couple of weeks ago, they said that they are worried about whether their activities will be allowed on there. Have they had any kind of approval of that? Again, it's a top-down situation. You haven't gone to the people about it, and some of the people are here and speaking to you about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Do you like a chance for rebuttal?
Members of the council, David Landis. A couple of pieces that have come out. One, I think there was at least a statement by one of the testifiers that they thought the hospital was coming down. It's not. It is going to be refurbished and made usable. A good portion of the hospital is not now used, and that will be very costly. Redoing old buildings is expensive. The beautiful buildings that we see from the exterior, the doctor's row, which is very handsome from the outside, are not handsome on the inside. Two of them are usable, two of them are not, but they will be refurbished and protected. It's for this reason, among others, that the Historic Preservation Commission twice looked at this project, once giving a number of recommendations, which were subsequently followed, and then last week voted unanimously in favor of the project, saying that it was a good balance of historical interests. A second thing that was asked about was whether or not payments that we were making as grants, were they repayable? And the answer was no, that in fact they are. I think the word grant taken at the notion that says this is an expenditure not to be returned to us would be accurate, and so the word grant in that meaning is appropriate. The last thing I want to talk about is the reference to the need to prove up on veterans' preference. Why can't it be said simply? Why can't it appear here? On page five, there is a sentence. It refers to forty-two new market-rate apartments. It's in Phase D. The one sentence says, "These apartment units shall be," not may, but shall be, "available seniors with preferences in accepting applications for tenants given to veterans who meet the head of household qualifications." In other words, shall be seniors with a veteran's preference. Those are the ideas in one sentence. That sentence appears six different times for any number of the buildings on the location. You'll find them on page five, six, and seven. In other words, that sentence does exist, and it's repeated multiple times in the agreement.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Landis, there were a couple of other issues that were raised. Would like input from you on access to the facility, the parade grounds, and the new occupant, if this goes forward, of the existing hospital space. Can you talk a little bit about access that veterans will have to those facilities?
The whole idea here is to have a seniors' and veterans' village, if you will. The, I'm going to turn to the developer to ask if I'm accurate in this, but the representation between the developer and the VA, and the developer and our Historic Preservation Commission, and the description here says that the parade grounds will remain as parade grounds. In other words, they stay the open landscape that it is. It will be a place that invites seniors and veterans to come to that location, and that will stay as it is. I believe those representations have been made to us. They certainly have been made to the Historical Preservation Commission, but I think there's also been made to the state historical officer, and I think they've been made to the VA. Now, having said that, I'm gonna see if those representations have been made and accepted. Yes, thank you. With respect to the hospital building?
Yes.
The hospital building will alter in its use. In fact, it changed from being a hospital to a clinic, because it was, it was better suited to be a clinic in the way that we now deliver medicine than the hospital that it was for the years that it was that, in that condition. It will not be a medical facility. It will be office space, and it will be services, and it will be potentially residential. Those are uses that that building does. But the building itself, historically significant, a landmark, will continue to exist and be used, and be used in a way that today is a rather good deal of the building that is unoccupiable. So, in a sense, that historical legacy will be honored.
You also indicated that there's an October 1st deadline that needs to be met for construction to begin by that date, and as I understand it, that is a HUD issue and particularly relates to veterans' housing, and particular veterans who are at risk or may even already be homeless. Can you address a little bit about that particular housing need?
There is a need for affordable housing that is general in our community. We have about 10,000 affordable housing units too low.
You've got somebody at your back who might is coming up here to.
We also have specific needs, and by the way, fair enough. We take at face value the presence of the Seniors Foundation, Aging Partners, the Veterans Administration, and the work of the professionals in the area, that this need exists. We wouldn't have gotten the VASH vouchers if we hadn't made a sufficient showing. However, I'm not able to cite chapter and verse, but I wonder if somebody in the immediate vicinity might be able to.
Hi, I'm Linda Tumi from the Nebraska Western Iowa Healthcare System, so I guess I would like to answer some of those questions. We currently have 100 vouchers that are allocated to the medical facility and the Lincoln Housing Authority. This project is calling for housing with 70 vouchers. That's called project-based vouchers. We are gonna use 25 of our vouchers that we have now and reallocate those into that project, because we have extreme difficulty finding rental properties for veterans who have a Section 8 voucher in Lincoln. I think probably most of you are aware of Lincoln is a very tight housing market with a lot of colleges in town, a lot of young people renting, and we have extreme difficulty. So, our plan is to take 25 of our current allocation and reroute them into this project because of the lengthy time periods it takes to house a veteran now. Lincoln is at 58 days to house a veteran with a VASH voucher. Nationally, we are at 79 days to house a veteran with HUD-VASH voucher, but in Omaha, we can do that in 34 days, because there's more housing stock available. So, we know we need additional housing for veterans who have VASH vouchers. We also have an allocation of 40 new vouchers just for this project, and that is where the October 1st deadline comes in. HUD, because it was a competitive process for this project to get the additional 40 vouchers, HUD, or 45 vouchers actually, HUD has said, if you applied and competed, you have to start your project by this date. Also, I keep hearing the term "construction" going around. I really would not like anyone to drive to the medical center on Thursday and see what is happening, because the HUD guidelines actually only call for excavation and site work. So, there will actually not be a lot of major construction going on. It's when we expect the excavation and the site work to begin.
Thank you.
Do you have any additional questions for the VA about processes that I can answer for you?
Thank you. I'm so glad you came up, because I had your name circled. I was hoping we would be able to speak with you. I want to talk about this October 1st deadline and these 40 additional vouchers. Someone has called for perhaps continuing and not voting on the program tonight. If we don't vote on the project tonight, then that puts us outside of the October 1st deadline. What happens to those vouchers if you're not excavating by October 1?
HUD has indicated to us that they will recapture those vouchers, and they will not be able to be used in Lincoln. They will take them and award them to a place who is ready to start these projects, and we've had lengthy conversations with them. Some of those conversations started last December about this guideline, so we are fairly confident that HUD means business. Also, this team has written to HUD and to VA Central Office asking for an extension of that October 1st deadline, and it was not granted. So, the VA, in the proceedings for the lease, as it's been talked about for a while, has given the developers' approval, everyone's approval, to move forward on October 1st so we can continue to use these 45 vouchers.
Thank you. John?
Two things. And you just mentioned that things have, the skids have been greased, so to speak, on this. Now, it was also questioned and discussed during testimony, but nothing's been signed yet. Can you address that a little bit on how this simultaneous equation occurs?
This is a very old project, per se, but I know it's getting a lot of attention now. Back, I think it was probably 2009, and I'm looking for a nod from Marion Stallings, is when this, the initial process for this lease started. The Seniors Foundation was awarded sometime around 2010, and they did sign an initial enhanced use with the VA. So, there is enough legally to continue through the VA's processes. What we're talking about is a final lease, and Kinsey Chris had mentioned there's a letter of action that's been dedicated for this project by VA, and VA will continue to do the necessary things until that final lease is signed. And we do expect that final lease to be signed rather quickly, in the next few weeks or next few months. Some of it's depending on, you know, some financing, some your approval, you know, all of those things.
Okay. And you mentioned that by honor before October 1st, there has to be excavation site preparation. So, what exactly is the definition of excavation?
So, I work for the Department of Veterans Affairs. HUD's requirement is the excavation and the site clearing, and we have asked for clarification about that. It could be something as little as a construction fence with starting inroads in for the construction. It could be clearing of some trees. It's fairly broad, and we do not have a specific definition from HUD, so like I said, it could be a construction fence and a driveway into the construction site.
Do you think HUD will accept that?
Yes, they will. We have, we, trust me, we've had this conversation many a times, and without clarification, that's what they have come to accept.
You mentioned a number of different vouchers. Can you clarify just how many of them will be applied to this project?
Seventy vouchers. So, we have 100 currently in Lincoln, and 25 will be taken out of our current allocation and dedicated to this project, and 45 new ones with the October 1st deadline will also be dedicated to the project.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Landis.
All right, more for Dave.
Real big question, put your legal hat on. What is the definition of senior? I know I've been called senior, but in many ways, but what is the definition of senior?
I'm not sure which legal source.
Mr. Ch- okay.
I don't know that the AARP definition, which is 55 or so, but George says it's 55-plus. There we have it.
I think Village Inn sets the plans for what a senior is, at least in my household. That's a really important one, but.
You know, one of the things that has repeatedly come up this afternoon is about age and preferences. So, I guess I want to talk a little bit. I would agree with 55 being a social worker for almost 25 years, and preference for veterans. In these leases, there's actually verbiage that says veterans have to be given 90 days. So, if a unit comes open and there is no veteran applicant waiting, the Seniors Foundation or the developer has to spend 90 days looking for a veteran to occupy that unit. If after 90 days no one is found, it can be rented by another person. In this case, it would be veterans, then seniors, and then general population. The chance of it going 90 days without veteran occupation is fairly slim. Of the projects that we know about that are similar to this, the waiting lists are quite long. It could take people potentially nine or 10 years to enter a project like this. So, I hope that answers some of the questions you might have about veteran preference and how veterans' preference is operated. It would be 90 days after a vacancy, they would have to reach out and find a veteran. If that could not be done, they could rent to a senior.
55 or older?
55 or older.
I'll get my ARP card out today.
Anything else? Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, Teresa, can you call the next item?
Yes, next would be item 11, Accepting the Report of New Impending Claims Against a City and Approving Disposition of Claims Set Forth for the Period of September 1st through the 15th, 2015.
Would anyone like to testify, speak to any of these items? Thank you. All right. All right, the next item, Teresa?
All right, next would be Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading, Item 12, Creating Water District 1204 for the Purpose of Constructing a 6-Inch Water Main in 26th Street from H Street to J Street, and Assessing the Costs Thereof Against the Benefited Properties.
Good evening, Members of the council. Roger Firehug, representing Public Works and Utilities. Chad, before you tonight is very typical situation, particularly in the older parts of our town, as we look at water mains and service. This is J Street on the top, H on the bottom, 26 through the middle, and typically, as town was growing, there were water mains in some of the streets, but not always in every single street. And in this case, there wasn't a water main from H to J, and the properties served in this area have long services that come out and go one way or the other to the other streets. And clearly, again, very typical, and over time, those longer services, smaller pipes, they corrode, they fill in. And in this case, we have a request from Ken Flower Day at 622 South 26th Street. Currently has very poor water pressure and sediment. It's difficult to repair, and a new water main adjacent to his property would be the best long-term solution. Again, also, typical to our process, we try to hold down the cost, so the cost of a water main abutting these older properties in town do not significantly exceed the cost of what it might, you might expect for a water main to be constructed out in the new subdivision. And as such, the total cost of this project is expected to be almost $145,000, but we would use our maximum residential rate. We'd only be assessing $40 per front foot to the abutting properties, so the special assessment would be just a little under $15,000, and Lincoln Water System would be picking up the majority of that to try to increase the safety in the area. Now, I can stick around in case there's any- Now, I can stick around in case there's anyone here to testify or to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to come forward in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Thank you. Okay, so what kind of notice do the property owners receive of tonight's hearing or what actually is being proposed by the city?
Good question. Clearly, there's been a meeting. We, Public Works, would try to go out and meet with the affected property owners. We also sent a certified letter to each listed owner about the public hearing here tonight, trying to give them adequate notice so they could be here and show up and testify.
Thank you. Okay, Teresa, can you call the next item?
Sure. Next would be item 13, creating water district 1205 for the purpose of constructing a six-inch water main in C Street from First to Second Street and assessing the costs thereof against the benefited properties.
Again, Roger Feiger, Public Works, very typical situation, very similar to the one we just discussed. This would be a water main in C Street between First and Second. Again, there are abutting water mains in those side streets, but the internal properties have long services that go out. This district was requested by Melody Cummings at 136 C Street. Estimated cost of this project, about $124,000. Again, we would be proposing only assessing $40 per front foot. The assessment would only be about $14,000 to those property owners, and Lincoln Water System would pick up the 110.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this item?
I would like to, but I would like to wait until I know my neighbor is going to oppose it. So I would like him to do that first and then address you, if that's okay?
You know, we typically have those in favor come forward first, so if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
My name is Melody Cummings, and I am the one that requested to have this done. Early spring, we had Black Hills rerouting the gas main through our neighborhood, and their contractor dug a little too deep and ripped up the water main in our front yard. This caused three breaks in our water main, one of them being at the shut-off on the corner. And we had two other ones that they totally had to rip my yard and our neighbors next door, who happens to be my son, our whole yard out to find these leaks. We were without water for two full days. We had dribbles. And doing some research on what I can do, they kept telling me, all these people, that these pipes are old, and I had the plumbers that came on site told me that this water line has been severely compromised by them breaking this line. They did repair it, which was a quick patch job, hence talking to the water company and people that I could get ahold of, this is what they told me I can do. I am kind of a head of household. My husband is disabled from a brain injury. I support our household. I know my neighbor, and I am all for him opposing this on his behalf, just recently paid $8,000 to have a leak to his property fixed. Nobody shared as much information with him as they did with me as to what we could do and how to handle this, you know, on a 20-year basis at $100 or whatever. And I totally understand his position. That's why I say I was going to let him go and then, and kind of explain what happened. I would absolutely like to go forward with this because I can't afford an $8,000 bill right now to have water coming into my home. I love our neighborhood. I love our neighbors. We've been neighbors for 30-plus years, and I know the hardship with Bob that he has. He's, you know, retired, and, you know, $8,000, I'm glad he came up with it because it would be hardship for me at this time in my life and stuff. So I would like to go forward with it, but I would also like to ask maybe if Bob could get cut out of that, since he has spent all this money. I don't know how that all works. People have told me to go to the city council on his behalf, and I'm sure he's going to speak to you guys on that, because for him to have to repay for it, it's kind of not fair. I want it because I don't have the $8,000 to do it on my own. They've already told us it's probably going to cost us a couple thousand to have the plumbing from the water main into our homes as it is, because at this time, the pipes they're telling me are the original in that neighborhood. So we're probably going to have to spend that much money to get that redone so that we don't have a leak later or with the construction. But I would like to see it go forward, but like I said, on behalf of Bob, I would like to see maybe something done to help him so that he isn't getting hit twice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Cummings, how many neighbors do you have? How many people on that block? How many homes?
Um, I'm not, I know there's one, two, three, four, five, maybe six, but I don't know if the corner where my son lives, which is 144, is that in this? I'm not sure.
Six.
Yeah, there's six of us total, but I know when we had the water main break, my son, he's on the corner. His water is connected to something maybe on Second Street, so I don't know if he's in this or not. So I'm not sure. I know we are.
Thank you.
And I know some of the neighbors across the street are.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this item? Or opposed? Please come forward.
Bob Hersel on 18 C Street. Apparently, I didn't need to come up here. She done pretty good. I'm going to move you in. Reason I'm opposed is she explained that last year I had a problem at my house, and I called the water company, and they says I'm responsible for my house to the main. So I took care of my responsibilities, $8,000 worth, and I'm hooked into the main on Second Street. So now, they come up and they want to run another one through there. And I was at a meeting last July, an informal meeting somewhere else, and they want to charge $40 a foot to go across my property. I have talked to Mr. Eskridge about this, and then $2,000, and they claim I have to hook into that line. Why do I have to hook into that line? I don't know who's in charge of this city water thing, but this seems kind of ridiculous. I've got my own line running to the main. And another thing, three houses which Cummings are in, her son and the house next to me, are all hooked on the water main from Second Street. And the three houses, my house and the neighbors and the one on the corner, are hooked on from First Street. So why do they have to hook us all up? Why can't they run a line? I don't know who to talk to. Why can't they run a line for three houses from Second Street like they got it now? Why did they even have to mess with the last three houses? Because we're hooked, we were hooked on Second. I'm hooked on Second, but I got my own line. And I can't see paying again. I don't, I don't know who to, I don't know what to do about this. And like Cummings says, I'm retired. I can't, I can't afford all this. They might as well put me in a hole, and I have to dig it to hook up to their new line again. Somebody, I'd like to get an explanation, but I, city, nobody knows nothing about it. They won't tell me nothing. And that's the reason I'm opposed to this.
Okay, go ahead, Carl.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, and we're going to ask our city engineer to come forward, and hopefully we'll be able to get some explanations and answers to your questions and see if we can find a solution for you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to, did you have a question? Oh, for Roger? Okay. Anyone else wishing to testify? All right, Roger.
First of all, I'd like to say it's really unfortunate. Doesn't happen very often, but occasionally, in these areas where there are long service, I want to make sure everyone understands there's a difference between the service line and the actual water mains that are being proposed to be built. The water main is a minimum of six inches and provides a whole lot more reliability than quite often the old galvanized pipe or the copper service pipe that runs from Bob's house over to the other side. Again, it's unfortunate that this happened. Our water system has a pretty good rapport with most of the plumbers in town, and whether there was a miscommunication, a lack of understanding, usually a plumber runs into a situation like this, and he's calling Lincoln Water System to say, hey, you know, before we go run this long copper service in, that's going to cost a lot of money, is there something else we could do? And typically, then we meet with property owners and start talking about a water district to run a new main line through and then hook the services up to that main line where it goes by. That didn't occur here. It's not the first time that this has happened. We've had several circumstances, and they are unfortunate. I think there are some opportunities. There aren't any exact answers tonight. Couple other things I would like to say is that by constructing a water main, rather than having those long services, you protect the fire, you increase the fire protection, and you actually increase the pressure and the ability for the homes to have a better water service than running these long copper service over at the edge. So that's why we would suggest that if we put a new water main in front, that his long service would be connected right up to that main. Then it would be abutting and connected to the water main in front of his property. We don't run the risk of some other utility later on coming through and tearing out those long service lines again. And ultimately, our long-term goal would be to have water mains in front of all the properties with the shortest service as possible. In this case, there would be a more of a minimal cost of hooking his service up because he's got new service line all the way into the house. It'll just be a matter of finding it, tapping it, and connecting it up to the water main. The other thing that Lincoln Water System tries to do with property owners that have long services that aren't new copper, when the new main is put in, they try to work with the property owner and the plumber while they're there to connect and run a new service line from the main up to the house, so that that's done, it doesn't break, you don't have the old service there. Options that I think you have tonight are somewhat limited in either creating the district or not. But to set the stage, if you create the district, we build the water main, then we'll be back before you, with you setting as the Board of Equalization. The cost of a benefit needs to be equally or uniformly assessed against the abutting properties. So that 14, or that $40 a foot, we would recommend would be against all of the properties that benefit and don't have other abutting service. If you believe that there was an inequity or a reason to consider something else, the Board of Equalization could eliminate an assessment to any one or all of those properties. That cost would not be transferred to anyone else. It would just be additional cost subsidized by the city. But you could choose to do that as Board of Equalization. I don't think you can do that tonight, but that does provide you an opportunity to consider how you might help an individual or a property when we get to the end. Our recommendation, as unfortunate as it is for this extra cost, is that it makes sense to move ahead, because typically, I go back in old history, over around C Street, property owners came in, they had a bad service, the district wasn't created, so several of them spent, just as Bob did, a lot of money. Then the next year, a couple more services went back, and the council then created the district. So if you don't create the district, the potential of those other long services going bad, I think, are very real and are there, and we would like to try to avoid having that happen to someone else in the future.
Okay, Roger, any questions?
When will this come? Let's say we approve the district, when will this come before us as a Board of Equalization?
It could easily be a year. If it's approved tonight, or actually, it's an ordinance tonight, if you approve that, then the city has the authorization to move ahead with the design. That's probably through this winter, construction next summer, probably. And then, when the work is all done, we accumulate those costs, and then we come back before you as a Board of Equalization.
And how much are we talking about assessing each home?
$40 a foot. So if it's a 50-foot lot, it's $2,000. And to make sure that there's also some extra cost to connect the service line to the main, so that could be an extra cost. So somebody that has to run a new service from the main into the house, it won't certainly cost $8,000, but...
But he's already spent $8,000.
He's already spent $8,000.
Okay, so he's spent $8,000, another $2,000, plus maybe another $1,000 to hook up to the main?
I would hope his connection would be much less than that, but it could easily be $1,000 to $2,000 for the other homeowners to pay the plumber to run a new, their private service line from the main up to the house.
Okay, how much is your house worth?
Pardon?
How much is your house worth?
It was just reevaluated $100,000, and I went and talked to him about that, and it dropped down to 86.
So we're talking about 10% of the value of your home being, plus more, being spent to you, charged to you over this whole thing?
That's right. They can't eat $1,000 for the $40 a foot, but I should eat the $8,000? It's just not right. It's not right.
And I think that's why we're willing...
Many, many years.
And I understand.
And they can't help me out on this?
Well, I think that's why I'm sitting here tonight, telling this group that they have some of those options, and they can choose to do that at the time with the Board of Equalization, because it is unfortunate when something like that happens, and I'm sorry that it did.
Carl, and then John?
Okay, thank you.
Words of sympathy does not help my bull.
Bob, thanks for bringing this forward, and for your neighbor too, because as you know, I mean, you had the experience a year ago that led you to do this, and she's got it now. And so the main needs to be installed there to the benefit of all the properties. We're doing a two-step process, that this will be addressed, and then in the Board of Equalization, we will take care of your issue at that time. Okay?
John, did you still?
I do, thank you. It is an unfortunate situation. Mr. Feiger, if you'd come back, out of curiosity, a year ago, when the plumber filed for a permit, which he or she would have had to do, to put in that extension at that time to reconnect, wouldn't that have raised a bell in the Public Works or Building Safety Department that this is in an area that we're probably monitoring water main history and condition?
It could have, and it may have. I've spent several conversations with both Building and Safety. At this point, we really don't know. Water system keeps very good records of someone calling and asking, and what, I can only speculate, but it's very possible that it could have been relayed that the service leak or the problem was at the house or in the house. And at that point, clearly, someone at Lincoln Water System might not have known it was the service main between the house and going out to the street and down along the block. Clearly may have thought, I'm only speculating, because we do catch a lot of these. That very conversation happens. I think in this case, his plumber was John Henry. We have a very good history with John Henry about if there's a service issue of them contacting Lincoln Water System and trying to find an alternative. This one simply somehow or other fell through the crack, and that did not occur.
I would just ask, in light of this situation, if perhaps Building Safety or whomever can redouble its efforts so that we try to be proactive in that. Secondly, we talk about the Board of Equalization in approximately a year from now.
Yes.
And this also may involve our city attorney, but what flexibility do we have to, pardon for using the word, discriminate in favor of Mr. Hersel, for example, to help him out? Would we not have to be equitable to all property owners if we gave him some relief, also give it to the other assessed, these are the five property owners?
I think I better defer. I get in enough trouble being an engineer without trying to be an attorney in this particular case, but I think you have a fair bit of latitude to...
And I think that is true, and I think we've had some circumstances before you before as a Board of Equalization, where because of particular circumstances that were explained to you, you've had the opportunity to make certain adjustments.
But can we do it for one individual, one individual property owner versus all six?
If the situation is different, then you may. Now, I mean, I'm speaking in general, and certainly when this comes up again, we'll try to be prepared to answer any specific questions about the specific circumstances. But in general, as Board of Equalization, I think you have a fair amount of latitude.
Okay. Well, I think all of us will be five of the seven city members at that time, the way the calendar goes campaign-wise or election-wise. But at the same time too, as my colleague, Mr. Esch, was saying, we're almost asking Mr. Ursul to trust us. And I can appreciate those are difficult words to take for anybody. So I guess document the files accordingly and remind us and let's be prospective in approaching it ahead of time so we make sure we're on legal ground.
Okay. We will. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa, do you want to call the next item?
Sure. Next would be our public hearing ordinance's third reading. I'll call items fourteen and fifteen. They are Annexation 15006, Amending Lincoln Corporate Limits Map by Annexing Approximately Forty-five point seven-three Acres and Adjacent Rights of Way on Property Generally Located at South Sixty-third and Yankee Hill Road and Change of Zone 04075, F as in Frank. Application of the Owners to Amend Village Gardens Planned Unit Development by Expanding the Boundary to Include Approximately Forty-six Additional Acres for a Change of Zone from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential for a Planned Unit Development District Designation and for a Development Plan Which Proposes Modifications to the Zoning Ordinance and Land Subdivision Ordinance to Allow Additional Single Family Dwelling Lots on the Underlying R3 Zoned Area.
Thank you for coming back tonight. We continued the public hearing to have a little further discussion about some of the issues related to this item. So why don't you go ahead and share with us your perspective?
Good evening, Members of City Council. Danae Calkowski, appearing tonight on behalf of Sixteen Forty LLC and Village Gardens LLC. And also with me tonight is Bob Benish, who's the Principal of those entities. As the Councilwoman mentioned, we were here a couple of weeks ago with the Amendment to the Village Gardens PUD. We're adding approximately forty-five acres of area to that PUD for residential uses, kind of consistent with what the overall development plan for that PUD was. At that time, we talked about two waiver requests that we had in front of the council. One of them was for a sidewalk waiver in the square block here to the north of Bridle Lane. And the second was a block-length waiver for the townhome area that's located south of Bridle Lane. I think tonight, we're largely wanting to maybe focus on that issue with the respect to the connection that would be required if the block-length waiver was not supported by the city council. A couple of weeks ago, we mentioned that the developer's position on the additional connection was that it really wasn't necessary for the size of the area that we're talking about here. It's not desirable, and frankly, if it was required, it would actually be an impediment to the sales of the lots with the type of development that they're trying to do here. This townhome development has thirty-nine lots, so not necessarily a larger one. We've got a vehicular access that comes out to Bridle Lane. Also would be pedestrian connection there. And there's also then a pedestrian access easement that'll come down to Yankee Hill Road and the ultimate trail that'll be there. So there'll be good pedestrian connectivity to whatever future use may be over here to the east of us. And as you recall, that use was, is shown right now as a neighborhood, future neighborhood center, but probably most likely a mix of uses with potentially some multifamily and then a mix of office, retail-type uses. So I think we feel the pedestrian access and the one vehicular access provides nice circulation for this area. I think I also mentioned, just really briefly last time we were here, is that there are several other examples around the city of developments that are similar in nature to this that make use of one vehicular access point. This is a pretty popular development in Williamsburg Cape Charles Town Homes. There are sixty-four units there on a single access, and like this one, that does have a pedestrian connection that goes out to a trail system. Another, probably more recent development, would be the Weeping Willow Town Homes, thirty units on a single access point here. And that would, that's north of, what, Pioneer, seventy-six or so in Pioneer's there. And at Planning Commission, we had one of the residents of that neighborhood also come and testify in support of, basically, how great that neighborhood was and in support of Bob's waiver request in this development. Just another quick example, Wilderness Ridge there on the south side of Yankee Hill Road. We've got seventy units with the single access point there. And then another older development that operates with one access point there at Bishop Square, we've got forty-eight units on that one. So there's similar examples, or many examples across the city of Lincoln. Those were just four that we came up with right off the top that show that in providing a variety of housing choices around the city, that there are examples where we have townhome developments with one access point that provides access to even more density than what we're proposing here. The Planning Commission did vote five to four to support the waiver. A couple of the factors they considered is, number one, if you recall, we have a gas line that runs along the south side of Yankee Hill Road here. So this is an area that has a gas line protection, protection area, pipeline protection area. Part of this property Bob bought before the pipeline protection area came in. So we've already, in trying to do residential development along the north side of Yankee Hill Road, had to accommodate that area with a setback. We're setting back about, I think about a hundred and eighty feet. The other twenty feet is in the rear yard setback of those lots. So he's already lost quite a bit of density or buildable area by trying to accommodate that setback. And being required, I think, the Planning Commission considered being required to make another additional connection would just create additional loss of density. And then I think just the second thing they were looking at is, we don't really know yet what the use of that area to the east is going to be and how a connection there would impact it. But, so those were just a few of the factors. Bob here can add more, or frankly, will take whatever questions you might have, and then Bob would be, either Bob or I'd be free to answer any of your questions or provide whatever additional information you think might be helpful.
Q, why don't you go ahead?
I'll jump in. Bob Benish, B-E-N-E-S. I also own Aspen Builders. We build quite a few homes here in town. And really, we got into the development business years ago because of the lack of development. There's just not available lots to build on. And in order to keep my company busy, I had to go get lots and land and develop lots on our own. So we kind of became a developer second, is what I would say. Unfortunately, now we are probably developing more lots than I intended to do, which is a good thing. So a little history there. We've done a lot of different developments. We've done a lot of different styles of homes, from, you know, single-family to starter homes to, you know, million-dollar homes to retirement housing. We've done several projects, and those have been very successful. And one thing that made them successful was the locations and also the way they were designed, you know, via security. We actually built most of the homes in the Weeping Willow, and people liked the fact that, you know, there was one way in, it was very secure. They liked the housing. They wanted to create this neighborhood feel. And they do that. When you have a street that runs from point A to point B and it's connected on both sides, you don't get the neighborhood feel like you do with a circle that would go in and all the neighbors get together and they meet, you know, on Fridays. And it's been very successful. And the reason I know that, like you said, is we built one out. So I've had many requests. We sold that one out very fast, and I've had a lot of requests from people wanting that same thing. And in fact, of these units here, we probably have ten people that can't wait till I get that street in that want to go in there. And you know, I've learned, doing these developments, first thing, you've got to go talk to the neighbors, make sure the neighbors like what you're doing. And we've done that out here. And this time, I think it's a little bit different. This time, we're going, I would like you to listen to the future neighbors. These are the people that are going to live there and what they want. And I think if you asked any of them, hey, do you want this extra connection in here? They would say absolutely no. It defeats what they're looking for in a house. And you've got to keep in mind that when these forty people move into this area, they're also vacating forty homes in Lincoln that we so desperately need in different parts of town. So I think what we're trying to achieve here is provide different types of housing for different types of people. Something very important in the comp plan, you know, it says, provide housing for this age group as they get older. What are they looking for? You know, these are the people that go to Phoenix in the summertime, in the wintertime, and they want to know that their snow's taken care of and that they're not going to get a ticket for not scooping their snow. They want to know that their yard's taken care of. They don't want to do it anymore. The demand is huge, and that's why we're wanting to do this. We've already sacrificed four lots due to the pipeline thing, and you know, we probably could have fought it and gone down that road, but it was, you know, there is, it was just understood that it would be best if we moved back, lose four lots. That really costs the project quite a bit of money. Adding another entrance would lose another couple of lots and add a big expense, because now you're saying, well, what if this is going into an apartment complex? Who's going to use this road? Well, now, do we want to do it as a private road? Maybe it should be a public road before everybody else is using it. So now we switch gears and say, well, if it's a public road, you know, maybe the townhome project or the patio home project wouldn't work. Maybe we should just do single-family. And so you start to really question if it's going to work or not. And I just think that when you tack on that much more money per lot, it just makes a big difference. So that's one of our reasons there. Other things on the comp plan, I know it says to encourage connectivity. I feel we really are, you know? We have that backdoor entrance for, you know, it says to connect, it says to encourage connectivity to shopping, to schools, to parks. I think if you look at this, if this becomes shopping on the corner, we are creating that connectivity with getting to the bike path, you know, instant access to that. I don't think people would want to walk through or, you know, an apartment complex in order to get to shop. I just think that would be difficult. So that's kind of our, what we want there. So I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you. Mr. Benish, the property just to the west of this, what's envisioned for that?
That has been purchased by the legacy.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, you see the legacy complexes. They're very self-contained, so there would not be any kind of...
So it will have frontage or access from Yankee Hill?
Off Sixty-third Street, which is the road to the west.
Okay. Any other questions? Could we have staff questions, please? David, can you come on up?
David Carey with the Lincoln Lincoln House and County Planning Department.
Thank you, David. When this was before planning, the planning department had recommended, including a condition that there was connectivity to the east. Can you go ahead and explain for us the rationale for that recommendation from your department?
Sure. Yeah, and I'll note that that vote was five to four at the Planning Commission, mainly based on this topic of the connections, either for or against. Just to kind of step back for a moment, that the idea about the connectivity, and Mr. Benish was accurate in talking about different forms of connectivity, it is one of those somewhat basic building blocks that we work under to try to have our neighborhoods have easy access into and through and then out of again, as well as between different uses, so that you can actually get, live in a neighborhood and be somewhat self-sufficient to a degree. And part of that is the road connections. And we have a standard that is for a quarter-mile distance around, and once we go beyond that amount of distance, we do have a requirement to have those connections made in the road network. There are some conditions depending on physical inabilities, such as if there's a natural drainage way or something that really limits that. In this case, when we looked at it, we were trying to be true to that requirement that we tried to apply consistently to all of our development proposals. So that's why that request to have that connection made in this development was made as far as the staff recommendation was concerned. And so, and I just also would point out that there are benefits to having that connection. I think we could have a good conversation about what the pros and cons are in this situation. But things like emergency access, the speed of that emergency access and response time is one of those, as well as when there is one access point, that we do like to have more than one if possible, because if there is an accident at the one access point, you really do limit the ability of the people that live in that neighborhood to have their access to their homes, as well as for other emergency purposes. That's just one reason why we like to have that, as well as the distribution of traffic. So that's just some background on what that basic requirement is when we talk about those block lengths and trying to make sure that we distribute the traffic in neighborhoods.
The issue of traffic comes up in many instances before the council. We have had recently on South Fifty-sixth, folks having trouble getting out onto South Fifty-sixth between Old Chaney and Pine Lake. We've had, we've heard from neighbors who've had complaints about that onto Eighty-Fourth near the fire station. And we certainly heard that when the Ashbrook proposal was in front of us, the proposal near Pine Lake for new apartments, that existing residents were concerned about getting in and out of their neighborhoods. So when we think about access points, today, there's no problem with traffic, but is that something, the future of the traffic load on these sites a consideration when you're making these recommendations?
It is. I think it's a matter of degree too. You know, I think some of the examples that Danae provided had some large amounts of units that are on one access point, and those are the ones that we really do try to avoid moving forward with new developments. That's become a standard practice of trying to limit the size of those single access points. In this case, the forty-unit number is about that breaking point that we tried to work with our Public Works Department to not have more than that. In this case, we have the thirty-nine units. So it's kind of right at that point where you have kind of the, it's good that it's not above that, let's put it that way. Because that can create a lot of traffic, you know, especially at peak times in the morning and the evening.
So what you're saying is that some of those prior examples, while they do exist in the community, aren't necessarily something we want to be replicating?
Yeah, and I think the other part of that is that if we had a lot of these replicating themselves over and over again, if we had all these happening, we didn't try to apply that recommendation and that requirement for the multiple access points and try to have multiple points of access. If you had too many of those happening, you would have neighborhoods created that would have some of those problems in the future. So it's one of those where we want to be true to that standard as we move forward. On a case-by-case basis, we can try to look at those on a case-by-case basis, but we are trying to apply them evenly across the community. That's where we stand in from the staff position.
And I've been referencing the impact on neighbors, but when we've heard from these folks complaining about traffic going in and out of their neighborhoods, it's been in response to proposals for neighboring developments. So when another developer wants to come in and put something in near an existing neighborhood, that's when we've actually heard this feedback. It's usually been opposition to further growth, opposition to further development that's adjacent. So in this case, we've heard what we think will be to the west. Do we know what's going to be put into the east?
We don't know for sure yet. Like was stated earlier, we have confidence in what's going into the west, not to the east. I think one of the ideas that we were talking about earlier going into the Planning Commission hearing was it might be useful to have this set up so that we have at this time showing that access point, and then if it didn't make sense in the future, depending on what the use is to the east, then that might be something that could be withdrawn later. That's not what the Planning Commission ultimately acted on, though.
Okay. So there is an opportunity for flexibility, an opportunity to review this access point again when we actually have more certainty about what's coming in next door to the east.
Yeah, there certainly would be. Yeah, there certainly would be that opportunity in the future if that's where we decided to go with this.
Okay. Any questions, John?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Carey, I have a number of questions. First of all, you've used the word standard, you've used the word requirement, you've used the word recommendation. Where, what are you referring to?
The block length limit that we have in our standards is to thirteen, twenty feet. So it's the quarter-mile. That, we get beyond that, that's when we are basically required to say that we should be breaking up that block length. If it's on a pedestrian side of things, it's actually a thousand feet. That's where we have those pedestrian easements, and on the roadway, it's the thirteen, twenty.
Okay, but where do those requirements lie?
Those are in our subdivision standards.
And we have the right to waive those, and I think that's been done here in the block length.
Correct.
On the connectivity, where are those standards, those recommendations, or whatever you, requirements that you refer to?
The connectivity as far as the streets...
I heard you use the word requirement of, you said requirement of, for connectivity, and what is the requirement?
Well, the connectivity in a general sense is talking about limiting the block lengths, and therefore, in these, in new developments, we look at how the streets are laid out. So when I say connectivity, I'm talking about street connectivity, and that gets back to that standard of thirteen, twenty limitation of the block length. So that's, it's all going back to that requirement.
Okay. Isn't a lot of the connectivity founded or based in the comp plan and our revisions there?
Sure, yeah. There's a lot of recommendations from the comprehensive plan, which is where the recommendations would come, that talks about the benefits of having that, so that you don't have these extra-long block lengths, and so that you have the distribution of traffic is another piece of this, too.
I appreciate this being held over since I wasn't able to attend last week's meeting, but, and I think I'm hearing because there are only five of us here, we may hold it over another week so that all of our colleagues can have the opportunity to weigh in with a vote. But I am concerned, over the years as I've served on the council, that we come forward with the comp plan, and we say, suddenly, ideas and goals of the comp plan, which are meritorious, but they suddenly become as if they're codified or what have you. And it's concerning when I see a developer or builder like Mr. Benish here, and he's now lost, I can't remember the exact footage, hundred and twenty, hundred and eighty, whatever it was feet because of the gas line, which is a new thing that's come up for health standards and protections of citizens. Looking at this with thirty-nine units, not a lot, and I feel like we're trying to create, there's a sense here of creating reasons why he can't do this. And at the same time, as he mentioned in his testimony, maybe stepping back and realizing this is an opportunity to provide a level of housing that has been very successful in the Bishop Square that Ms. Kalkowski said. And I'm just, and with the block length, you say that that's a reason we gotta break this up, and I believe it's, what, sixty feet longer than a thousand foot that we like on a block? Correct me if I got the number wrong.
I didn't follow what you were saying.
Well, the block length exceeds the desired length of a block, and that was...
I think that's what the, that's what the distance is.
And it's, what, about sixty feet?
I think it's in that range, yes.
Not a, not a huge amount here. I guess I, I'm perplexed at some of this, just seeing with the numbers of units and the idea of connectivity where you already have with bike lanes, you've got the pedestrian access and so forth, that why, why there's such an urgency here to create a concern when...
Well, I would say, just to respond to that, I think that the finding of the planning commission is a direct response of all the different points that you bring up and others have brought up, which is there's a range of issues to take into account for approving this proposal. It was a split vote at five-four, so there was all good range of discussion that occurred there. And so taking into account all the different factors here was taken into account at the planning commission, and that's, the recommendation did come from the planning commission to move forward without that connection. And I put on the record, we did work with the developer on the pipeline planning area. We did work that out. That was a very good thing to work out, became something that was a positive outcome of this. So just to be clear about that.
And I appreciate all the parties wanting to discuss the issues, and my colleagues who have asked that, too. All good issues, and again, there's some, in fact, in this case, probably a lot of subjectivity just due to the location and these other issues. And I know we've had situations, as one of my colleagues talked about, on Pine Lake and the South Eighty-Fourth access, and we had other larger neighborhoods, so that we're more concerned about throwing more into that neighborhood, and I don't know that that's quite applicable here. What do you see in the future? Forty is kind of your limit. What can we do to be proactive and encouraging of developers to come forth with housing alternatives for our citizens and create a more dense situation?
Oh, I think there's a lot of different ways to do housing. I think Mr. Benish would be, you know, a good resource to talk about that, by the way. You know, I think there's just different ways you can lay out neighborhoods. You could have a lot of different access points and have a range of housing. You could also have an example of what we have here in this proposal and where you do, as long as it's limited, I think you're limiting the possible negative effects. And I think that's kind of where we're at, your comment about the, how far beyond the thirteen, twenty-foot point are we? How far beyond what's reasonable for the number of units that would have one access point? I think this, personally, I think it falls within that more reasonable range, but we wanna be very careful that we wouldn't wanna replicate some of those other developments from the past where you had large amounts of units that have only one access point. That's really the concern that I would have, and I think what the planning department and even public works department would have for those types of things in the future. So I think that's, there's a level of, there's a breaking point where the reasonableness goes away. So I think that's what we all need to be aware of when we make decisions.
Well, and that's good for this discussion, because it helps us try to put a little bit more black and white into the issue where it doesn't always exist. And I too respect that we have overridden the planning commission on time, so even though you had a five-four vote, but I appreciate all the effort everyone's gone into and the fact that you worked with the builder developer here in the preceding months. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like another, would anyone else like to speak on this item, or?
Richard Escavell. I'd like to speak against it, but I don't want to. The reason I'd be against it is doing all this building south instead of coming north, northeast. We are seniors now. He got that explained to us earlier, and this is one, like he explained, this is what us baby boomers are looking for. We are looking for a little privacy. He said that mainly older people are gonna go in there, and they want their yard work. These are townhomes. These are not families. These are townhomes probably for older people, maybe older children. There isn't any in Lincoln on the north side. Yeah, but that one entrance creates privacy. And if, and like he said, it's, it's a little subdivision like the VA campus. It's the same thing. You know, they were gonna refer it to veterans' preference. Well, he's not building for three kids and, you know, eighteen cars parked out front, which is north of what they're doing with these, is they're building all these nice townhouses, and students are renting them out. So, but we do, we do need senior neighborhoods in Lincoln, Nebraska, real bad, 'cause us baby boomers are getting senior now since we're over fifty-five. But I think he has a great plan. I really do.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Would you like another chance to come on up?
Just a quick couple of points. One thing I didn't talk about, which... As you go to the east, where a potential, if you were to do a connection to the east, the grade issue is very severe. So here, you know, here's the level of the middle of that patio home subdivision. It's a fifty-foot drop to the east, okay? That's, that's a huge grade issue. So to put a connection going east, can it be done? Yeah, anything can be done. It's very expensive. It eliminates, what you end up doing is tilting that whole subdivision this way, and you then would wipe out all your walkout lots. Currently, it's designed, it's kind of the top of this hill. It's designed, you go in, and it's a double entrance inn, okay? So there's two entrance, I mean, it's a double street with an island. Do you know what I mean? So...
Do you wanna just try and show us on the map? That would be helpful.
Right there. It's an island entry. So you have, it's not...
Like a boulevard.
Like a boulevard, thank you. I'm just a dumb home builder, so. But, so it's like a boulevard inn, so it's not just the narrow street going in. And so the grade issue, right now, this is in the middle, we've got walkouts around the outside, or daylights around the outside, and then flat in the middle. Going to change that grade, you have to then get that road down. So you're gonna basically tilt down and go to flat lots and work your grade down in order to try to get a street going east. So what that means is if I wanted to get this going this fall, which I really desperately need to, if you say, well, you know, we'll put that thing in there, but maybe we won't have to do it, because if apartments go in there, then you don't have to do it. You kind of have, we kind of have to make that decision now, because the grading part of it, you know, you have to grade the project. You have to lay out the water, the sewer. It just doesn't work to add it. Maybe now, but take it out if you don't need it. It just, it doesn't work. Plus, then you lose the impact of the economy of the value of those lots, because people want walkout lots. The other question you had was access points, and you said some concerns, you know, our neighbors have concerns of getting into neighborhoods along Eighty-Fourth, along Yankee Hill, along Pine Lake Road. I think this would be a little bit different in that this access point isn't onto the Yankee Hill Road. It's Bridle Lane, which is just a residential street. So it's not, getting in and out of this neighborhood is not like getting onto Eighty-Fourth Street. That's what I was gonna point out. I think those were the major issues, unless anybody else had any other questions. It's a matter of cost. I mean, it really makes a big difference to add a connection. You're looking at a couple hundred grand. And we already lost two hundred grand eliminating four lots. Now all of a sudden, the project doesn't financially work, and now you gotta explain that to a banker. So that's the hard part. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Teresa, do you wanna call?
That would conclude our public hearing. We can move into the voting session, then. Public hearing resolutions. Item nine, approving the Victory Park VA Campus redevelopment introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved. Oh, sorry. Let's have someone else move that.
Second.
Okay, moved by Christensen, second by Eskridge.
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item ten is amending the fiscal year fifteen sixteen CIP for the Victory Park VA Campus project introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Christensen, second by Eskridge, and would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. This is, this is obviously a very, very important decision and action that we have taken and need to take, you know, right now. It's, without doing this project, this land likely is gonna sit empty without any benefit to veterans or anybody in the community. So very supportive of it, and very hopeful that indeed the Veterans Clinic will also be located at this property. That's, that's not our decision to make, but would certainly help and be an appropriate location. Thank you.
John?
Thank you. This measure we're voting on now deals with the tax increment financing, or nickname it TIF. And as was noted in some of the testimony, there were a couple of us who voted against the actual blighting, which is a precursor to allowing TIF. This occurred several weeks ago, and I was one of those. And I think it was brought up by Mr. Bear, one of the neighbors, about beyond this project, perhaps there should be a review of how we approach the blight studies and what qualifies for blighting, and I would agree with him wholeheartedly. As my colleague, Mr. Eskridge, just said, though, and I think as this project has evolved, it is an important project for Lincoln, and I think for the veterans, and I being one of those. And I'm looking forward to having that clinic out there and seeing Danny and other people out there. So, you know, I think we go ahead. We've got a lot of good parties here, and we'll just keep the lines of communication open to make sure things progress well, and let's hope that the VA makes a good decision come January.
Roy?
I'm in agreement with both of my colleagues who've spoken on this subject. This is my neighborhood. Some of the people that have spoken are my neighbors. We've heard from veterans. But one of the things I hear continually from members of the community is they would like to see more development outside of the downtown area. And this project meets that criteria, it will be, I think, a good economic activity for our community. And without doing this, Councilman Eskridge is exactly correct. This property, the VA has already decided they're not going to maintain it. They're not going to occupy it. And so doing nothing rather than something in this case is certainly not an option when the benefits are so significant. So I intend to support this.
All right. Teresa, will you call the roll? Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item eleven, then, is the report of claims against the city introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Christensen, second by Eskridge. Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Public hearing ordinance is second reading or items twelve and thirteen. Public hearing ordinance is third reading, item fourteen, annexation one five zero zero six, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Eskridge.
I would make a motion that we delay. We are missing a couple of our colleagues here tonight. I think it would be beneficial to have a full team, if possible.
I will second that, and I'd like to add some explanation to this, too, because many people don't understand that any action by the city council, regardless of how many are present, must have four votes to pass. And right now, I believe that this would not have four votes. And so I think it, rather than having the vote and then automatically having it carried over to next week, I think it behooves us just to realize that's the situation. Move it to next week, use the opportunity to find out more information. And so each council member that's present and those that are absent can make better decisions.
Were you doing it with public hearing open or just for vote?
I think we've had enough public hearing. I think we can make a vote.
Clarify, so it's on the record. Okay, thank you.
So this will be moved to delay public, or delay action for one week?
Yes.
Very good.
Action only.
Action only. All right. Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item fifteen, then, is the change of zone introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
And same motion?
Same motion, yes.
Second.
Seconded by Christensen. All right. Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next?
If there are only ten of us.
I'm sorry, five to zero.
Unless I'm voting beside myself.
All right. Ordinance is third reading. Item sixteen, change of zone one five zero two five, application of Slossburg Company for a change from R four to R five residential at two forty-one North Forty-four Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Christensen. Teresa, call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item seventeen, change of zone one five zero two four. This is the application of the trustees of the Edward Schwarzkopf Q-Tip Marshall Deduction Trust for a change from R four residential to H three highway commercial on property at Southwest First and West L Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Christensen. Discussion? All right. Teresa, call... Seconded by Christensen. Discussion? All right. Teresa, call the roll, please.
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item 18 then is the Development and Conditional Zoning Agreement for the Same Property, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Christensen. Discussion?
Yes, thank you. Um, this, this is just a continuing challenge that this neighborhood, uh, faces with regard to an industrial use in, literally, in its backyard. And it's, it's very difficult. Fortunately, uh, the, the applicant here has, has, uh, established some conditions that I think, uh, helps to, to actually make some improvements in terms of how this is, is going to be conducted, and the impact on the neighborhood actually is gonna be of some benefit, as some drainage issues, uh, that are presently impacting the neighborhood park will be addressed. So, for that reason, I'll support it.
Thank you. Um, I, too, believe that this is a really difficult situation, and it is because even in the planning or even in the initial stages, it was residential in the middle of all this industrial. We really don't know what's gonna happen when we have, uh, ha- uh, those, this kind of environment. I did appreciate that the applicant, um, has agreed that it will be just for the storage, there'll, uh, and that, uh, any future app, any future different uses would have to be applied for separately. And I think that that, that they've, uh, made the various, uh, conditions of improvement in order to benefit the neighborhood and this particular property, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate this use above, uh, others that may be a little more onerous to the, to the neighborhood. So, for that reason, I'm supporting this.
All right. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Resolutions on first reading, just one, item 19. Ordinances, first reading, are items 20 through 27. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time since it is an open microphone session.
Okay, I'm here about this health hazard up on Number 27th. Has anything been done about it? I don't want you to tell me about private property because I know all about private property. I had two occasions, I had thousands of dollars of abnormal bills, and they come in, took them in the city and out of the city. So, don't tell me they can't go on private property to fix a health hazard. That's stagnant water. And I don't want to hear anything about, oh, we'll take it under advisement or something. I want something done. What do you say? Huh? It's your area. It has to be done.
Okay.
It's stagnant water, and it's camouflaged by, by some ki- kind of flowers. You can't even see it hardly. Will you check into it and get it done?
This is, this is, my understanding, it's a retaining area for, for stormwater. We'll, we'll make sure that it's performing appropriately.
Well, they could pump it out, then.
Okay.
Keep it dry.
All right.
And another thing, at the city of Lincoln, the police department can't do nothing about parked cars anymore. On the way down there, I seen three cars that were parked illegally. Now, does it take another police officer to do it? I understand, they just drive right by and don't even look at them. They got some civilian outfit doing it. Now, do you know anything about that? You people, city council?
Where was the location?
Huh?
Where was, where was the location, Mr. Cash? Or, Mr. Austin, I'm sorry. Where, where was the location of the cars?
Where were they? On the city streets.
But, where?
In the residential area. Did they take the jurisdiction away from the police department?
Well, in the downtown area, a lot of the enforcement of parking is with a privately contracted, uh, entity, and we have, uh-
They don't have jurisdiction anymore on, on the residential areas, huh?
They do.
The police department?
They do.
Huh?
They do.
If you see something of this nature that you feel is unwarranted, give the police a, a call. You know, unfortunately, with the stretching we have of our police force, something like this is more of a situation where a citizen calls in and reports it. Uh, they're just limited how many-
They got a nu- they got a non-emergency number you call.
Right.
And takes a long time for them to get there.
You, you see the, the cars that, that look sort of like police cars, but they don't have the lights called Parking Enforcement on them? Tho- those are the cars that police, that control the parking.
Yeah. The guy gets out and he got a police cop on that spot is.
Okay, well, all right.
What's this country coming to? First, you take the veterans thing away, and I don't know. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Two quick items. Number one, Carl, I believe you represent the North Bottoms?
Yes.
Some time ago, I was at a, a meeting on lead.
Yes.
And I, I just wonder, a lot of the, a lot of the residents down there think their, their representation, as far as the neighborhood itself, is just next to nothing. And I'd like to know what progress, if any, has, has been made in that direction. Has there been any additional meetings, or?
I have a point of order. Just for clarification to anybody who wants to testify, this is not the occasion where the council answers questions. This is the occasion where we listen to what your complaints or concerns might be, but it is inappropriate to question council members from, uh, in, in this situation. We can talk to you and answer questions away from the dais outside of an official city council meeting.
Okay, well, since you're speaking, I would like to see written information in regards to the statement you made that the VA had no intention to do anything to that land out there. You made that statement. It should be on the agenda. I want to see the written, I want to see it in black and white where you got that information, okay? Now, back to you. What are, what are we doing?
I'll see you after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. Watch Dogs has serious concerns about the council members' behavior in the last two meetings about the budget. We do not see these meetings were transparent, accountable, or efficient, nor in the best interest of Lincoln's citizens. Before I make my remarks, let me say that they are made with respect to those individuals I will personally address, without any malice or desire to demean, but to inform you and the public about the viewpoint on council procedures. Number one, any council member should be able to address any budget issue if it is on the agenda, and should not be bamboozled by poor or incomplete information from city staff beholden to the mayor, as was Mr. Christensen. To hold him responsible for misinformation or not act, asking enough questions is to blame the victim. Number two, those who want to oppose any motion should do so in an above-board manner before the meeting, so every colleague and public person can know what is happening. No member should try to ambush a motion by suddenly bringing forth a procedure, as Ms. Gaylor Baird did. Then she continually called on Mr. Kirkpatrick and Mr. Hubka to reinforce her procedure. This is not transparent. It's an ambush. She obviously was a pawn for the mayor to allow him to get his way. When any member wants to make a motion that is unusual or controversial, he or she should let everyone else know before the meeting, so that those opposed can prepare to present their opposition. Underhandedness is not democracy. Third, members should not be pawns of the mayor. Each member should res- represent their constituents who voted for them into office. Mr. Exris obviously is a pawn when he voted for the taxpayers to pay for a sparkly sculpture near the arena. We all know the issue could not pass before he did so. One of your constituents told me some time ago that she told you that she saw you as a puppet of the mayor. Now, you have proved it. All council members should read Lincoln vital signs to learn that there is a large majority of Lincolnites who are not developers, or rich, or powerful. It is sad that Ms. Raybold would say that renters would not be affected by a property tax hike. Come down from your ti- h- ivory tower and see that seniors, children, and vulnerable adults have not benefited from your power. It is obscene the amount of money that the 2015 vision and some of its members are making from your votes of approval for the Haymarket Development. Using the TIF to line the pockets of wealthy developers and negate the concerns of ordinary pi- citizens is a crime, though not punishable by law. All members do this, whether Republican or Democrat. Ms. Raybold says you are friends. Watch Dogs does not want you to be friends. We say be friendly, be respectful, be alert, be helpful, but above all, be aware. Our advice is similar to you, as to the words of Jesus to his disciples in Mc- Matthew 1016. I send you out as sheep among wolves. Be wise as serpents and harmless as doves. Take care of all our city. It is not as great as propaganda would lead you to believe. We have big problems here that are not being addressed. We hope that you will, in the future.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward?
And actually, I came to say thank you. So, everybody knows who I am, Terry Pope Gonzalez. I, uh, was told to suck it up for my people. Um, we've had three horrible, horrible funerals. August 31st, she was 105 years old. Ah, September 3rd, she was 99 years old, and September 9th, she was 93 years old. So, can you imagine where I come from? So, I actually come from the 7th Calvary. Hmm. But you, young lady, I appreciate that you came. I really do. I'm just, I, I had notes. You, young man, I don't know the procedures. So, I appreciate that you explained the different things you explained. John, I appreciate you. Jeff, I'm mad at you, so we don't look at you, okay? But, and all of you guys, I have learned a really lot from you. Before my dad died, he told me to suck it up. I got on the job training, which attorneys pay thousands of dollars for. So, I'm actually gonna be really, because my husband's waiting, my husband doesn't like to do all this craziness. So, what I wanted to say is poison is poison is poison. And right now, I'm at ground zero. So, when they poison the water and they poison the air, and it gets to all of you, remember, poison is poison is poison. And so, I just wanted to say thank you. I don't really like to come to these because I don't like the monkey show. I hope you kept your yellow monkey, or did you throw it away?
No, I haven't.
Did you keep? Now, see me? I'm Italian, I'd have thrown it away. But, I just wanted to say thank you. You guys have taught me a lot. I am independent, so I had to explain to my husband, as far as I know, you're Republican, you're Republican, you're Democrat, you're Democrat, you're Republican, you're Democrat. Is that right? Oh, I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I, hopefully, I have that right, okay? Because where I come from, it's okay to be independent. I read in the paper that the governor's wife was independent. So, now, in Denver, Colorado, it's okay to be independent. In Texas, it's okay to be independent. Now, I work on either side, whoever I think is the good person. So, anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. I have learned a lot. You notice I'm without my crutch? I'm losing weight. My brothers have said, "Suck it up." And, oh, one more thing I need to say. Did you know that when you're an attorney, you just practice law? You don't know law, you just practice it? Now, see, that, I thought you knew it, okay? So, that was new to me, is that you just practice law. But, now, now, listen, now, Roy, I don't like that when you guys talk among each other, okay? Because I don't talk among you, on myself, when I'm listening to you guys. So, anyway, I think I'm done. Is my, I'm, I'm early, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you very much. And yes, I am working for these people today. That's how you can tell which brother I'm working for, by which brag, ba- which bag I carry, okay? And I wish they would start showing up themselves, so I didn't have to. So, anyway, can, do I have to really sign it?
You could.
Okay, but there's no more room?
That's fine.
Okay, you know who I am. You got me.
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak?
Mike Rosen, I'd, I'd asked you several meetings before to put together some information for me on the, the 911 enhancement, you know, what had been taken in. You know, and just to give an average, you know, probably a mil, million, million plus is taken in on that for that enhancement, and I wanted to know how much had been taken in to date and what had been spent on. You know, 'cause we're, we're getting money from, being asked, you know, for money for other issues, but I want to see where this money is going, you know, that 50 cents or that dollar that's on your telephone bill and where it goes. So, when you get a chance, John or that, put that together for me, so they can have it, 'cause there's a number of constituents that have brought that forth and would like to know. And to be transparent, and that's transparency, you know, if we're gonna be charged this money, where's it going? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak?
Chair Gaylor Baird, members of the council. For the record, Gary Aldridge, A-L-D-R-I-D-G-E, 7112 South 4568516. I'm one of the owners. If I'm the last one to speak here tonight, I'm the guy you've been looking for since 5:30 PM or maybe 5:30 AM. I was in this building, in this room, three weeks ago on 8th September. I came at the invitation of Mr. Feigard and/or Ms. Gaylor Baird. I was here for a quote "notice of public meeting" and quote "notice of budget hearing" for the Railroad Transportation Safety District in Lancaster County, Nebraska. Both notice of public meeting and notice of budget hearing were published as required by law in the Journal Star. The RTSD is a hybrid political subdivision. Perhaps a joint public agency is a correct descriptor for the govern- governance of RTSD. The RTSD is created by state statute, 74 NRS 1301 at SEC, to do certain things. I have no major quarrel with the declared quote "policy" of this- I have no major quarrel with the declared, quote, "policy" of this state with respect to the practices, procedures, and/or protocols of RTSD. Every political subdivision taxing authority by law, with certain exceptions, see Nebraska Budget Act 13 NRS 501 at SEC, must, quote, "make available pertinent information of such governing bodies, so intelligent and informed support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations can be made by those affected." The Nebraska Budget Act does not proscribe or prescribe what support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations a citizen can offer, only that those affected are allowed to speak on and assist formation of public policy. I did speak at the RTSD meeting during Agenda Item 11, quote, "non-agenda items slash public comment," misnumbered as nine by the Journal Star. The Agenda Item specific to the purpose of 13 NRS 501, the Nebraska Budget Act, for RTSD was number five, quote, "approved 2015-2016 budget." The proposed budget for FY 2016 was presented by Mr. Feigart, and bless me, Feigart did a magnificent job. The proper place or pause to accept public comment was Agenda Item 5, when Feigart finished. The county board has seen me numerous times in this room. When I attend a county board meeting, I offer almost always public comment. The board is familiar and/or worn out with my routine. The chair did not allow, as either courtesy or right, and I think it is a right established by statute, public comment on the RTSD budget. When Feigart finished presenting the FY 2016 F-RTSD budget, I moved toward the microphone. Before I got to the center aisle, a motion and second was made to accept, and the FY 2016 budget for RTSD was approved 5-0. The total elapsed time from motion by Christensen through viva voce was 17 seconds. Ain't democracy beautiful? And speedy. I returned to my window ledge seat. My opinion at the time, and I have not changed or modified my opinion, the meeting was conducted and/or managed poorly. During public comment, I made an observation. The meeting started absent the pledge of allegiance. A pledge is usual and customary. I find nothing in state statute that requires a pledge. Action by a public body at a pledgeless meeting is not illegitimate. At a ballgame or public meeting, most expect a national anthem and/or pledge. It is routine and has the same, or perhaps different, meaning for each citizen. Omitting the pledge is not actionable. Ignoring or suppressing certain provisions of statute is a different ballgame. That is a skate dangerously close to a court of competent jurisdiction. Government is legitimate only, only, only with citizen participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Madam Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I would move for adjournment.
Second.
Seconded by Eskridge. Could you call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
We are adjourned.